Hello, everybody.
Hi.
Good afternoon.
Can you hear me?
Yep.
Perfectly.
Okay, good afternoon, everybody. We'll be starting, we'll start the meeting as soon as we get a quorum. Matt, can you hear me? Not anymore. No. Okay, hang on. Let me see if I can do-
I got it. I can hear you now, Morris. Yeah.
All right.
Yeah.
Should I bring Bruno?
That was the mailman.
Oh, well, if I, if- Okay, do we have a quorum yet?
Yes, we do.
Yes, we do.
We do. Okay, thank you. Okay, okay, I'm calling the meeting to order. And before we begin, the town manager is going to read a disclaimer.
Thank you. Just before we get to our agenda, this is just a reminder to the residents and participants that our meetings are recorded and get posted on our town's website. There will be a public comment period when we, when we get to certain discussion items. And we just ask that audience members, please, hold your questions until you've been called on. You can use the raise hand feature if you, if you'd like to make comments. And please state your name and the street that you live on for records-keeping purposes. And ask that you try to limit your comments to two minutes and not repeat previously made comments. So if, the last thing I'll say is that if, for whatever reason, we get interrupted and we have some disruptions, we'll, we'll, we'll end the call and we can send out new instructions to folks immediately. We'll knock on wood that we haven't had that happen yet, so hopefully it won't be the case here. But that'll, that'll be what we'll do if, if we do get to that.
Okay, thank you. So our first item, our first, hopefully, brief item is a public hearing and a motion to consider approval of a letter in opposition to the site plan amendments at the Chevy Chase Center. Council President Shaw, can you please present this?
Yes, the, the development collection one and two is under a, an agreement that was reached many years ago about a variety of aspects of the site, including the amount of public space that would be provided as part of the project. Recently, the Chevy Chase Land Company asked that there be changes, amendments to the site plan that would allow them to have dining along Wisconsin Avenue in front of some newly, new to be established restaurants. The question is, what's happening to the public space? And also, will there be a sufficient clear path along Wisconsin Avenue if tables are put in in order to accommodate pedestrians? And it's, this is also designated as a bike path to the metro. So the current approximately 15 feet of space accommodates pedestrians and it accommodates bikers and people with strollers and whatever all. The proposal from the Chevy Chase Land Company, the proposed amendment would reduce that space by approximately half. And several communities that are near the collection are planning to testify tomorrow in opposition. And our mayor would like to have the support of the council in, for his testimony.
And also, I want to add that this is the position adopted by the Citizens Coordinating Committee on Friendship Heights, which we are a very strong member. So council member, Zooig Hasser, do you have any questions? Okay, you can unmute her, Matt.
Barbara, are you, I'm showing you as unmuted. Are you? Hmm. There.
Maybe you should unmute everybody first.
There. Are you, try it now, Barbara. Hmm. Um.
Barbara, you might have to choose to join with audio.
Why don't I, while we're working that out, why don't we, Councilor Pio, do you have any questions?
She's unmuted.
Matt, unmute Franny. Do you have any questions?
Yes, I think I'm in favor of dining along Wisconsin Avenue. Personally, so I, I guess I'm, I understand that, you know, other people, other organizations are going to testify against this. But I, I don't really have any questions other than to say that I'm in favor of allowing dining. I think those businesses need all the help they can get. And if this is what they're trying to do to attract restaurants to the area, I'd rather not see empty storefronts. So that's my view.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Zooig Hasser, are you available now?
No, looks like.
Okay, okay. Councilmember Paner.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
But I, I agree with Franny. My concern is what is going to happen with the collapse of retail in that whole area and the implication for our neighborhood.
Right.
I am very worried that with Lord &amp; Taylor going out of business and I think others soon to follow.
True as well.
But do you have any questions?
Right, sorry, I, I think I missed a comment.
This is just an opportunity to, do you have any questions about it of, of our council president?
Yes, I just have a question echoing Franny's, whether this is really the position we want to take in light of the complexity of trying to keep that space occupied in a productive and healthy way for our neighbor. Thank you.
Matt, can you hear me now?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
But before, Councilor Zooig Hasser, before you talk, Council President Shaw, do you want to answer Councilman Paner's question?
I'm not sure what, what the question actually is. I think he's saying that he believes that that's important for main, uh, starting up businesses back in that empty space.
Okay, thank you. Councilor Zooig Hasser, do you have any questions?
Yeah, Marnie, I did have a question. When did this Chevy Chase Land Company ask for this change?
I think it was toward the first of the year. And there were a number of conversations between the Chevy Chase Land Company, the Coordinating Committee, and others. There were some positions filed in, I believe, March by some communities to the planning board. And tomorrow is basically a hearing as opposed to just sending comments.
And when was the hearing scheduled?
I don't know.
Was it scheduled yesterday?
No, no.
Like two, two weeks ago.
Yeah, I, I have to say, getting the Jeffrey's draft testimony at 11:30 this morning, I, I have not really had a chance to focus on it at all. So really, all that I know is what Marnie is saying. And I just find it really difficult to vote on things when we're so, when they're given five minutes on the agenda and we're hurrying through. And I, I have to agree with Franny as well. And I didn't get to hear what Morris had to say because my, I signed out and then signed back in. But those businesses are hurting. Those stores have been empty for a long, 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 long time. And they're now going to have to set their tables probably many more feet apart than otherwise. And anything we can do to help them survive in our community, I, I think would be worthwhile. But again, I, I think we would need more time to, to talk about this. So I'm, I'm not prepared at this point.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Circa, do you have any questions?
No questions.
Okay, thank you. Are there, are there comments or questions from our residents or guests? Okay, hearing none. Council President Shaw, do you want to make a motion?
Yes, I moved that the town of, the council support the testimony that the mayor intends to deliver tomorrow.
Is there a second?
I second it.
Is there a discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Opposed.
Opposed.
Did everybody vote?
Yes.
I didn't hear Morris.
Opposed.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you, everybody. The next item, discussion, Maryland Healthy Lawns presentation from Mary Travellini, Program Manager, Organic Lawn and Landscape Program, Montgomery County Department of Environmental Protection, followed by a presentation from Bob Mann, the Director of State and Local Government Relations, National Association of Landscape Professionals. And before I turn it over to Matt to preview what this is all about, I want to thank Bob and Mary for taking the time to join us today to provide this very useful information. And I know, Bob, that we've been, we've been putting you off for like three or four months. So thank you for your patience. And with that, I will turn it up. And, and the way it's going to go, because we have a, a stop time at three. So each of the, Bob and Mary will make presentations. Then we will take, this is just a hearing. There's no decision to be made today. So Bob and Mary will make presentations. Then council members will have the chance to ask questions. And then we will take questions from our residents and guests. And thank you so much, Mr. Town Manager. It's all yours.
Thanks. I won't take too much time because in part, Mary was pretty instrumental in, in, in helping this in Montgomery County. But just as some background, in, in 2015, and Mary, correct me if I'm wrong on any of this, but in 2015, Montgomery County passed a law restricting the use of certain pesticides on private lawns, playgrounds, recreation areas, childcare facilities, which banned most synthetic pesticides. That law went through a couple of different iterations of various challenges in the courts and essentially was upheld in 2019. The law allows for municipalities to opt in rather than opt out. So the town of Somerset, in order to adopt the same laws, would need to affirmatively enact its own ordinance opting into the county law. And with that, I, that's, I think, the 50,000-foot view of it. But I'll, I'll turn it over to Mary and Mary can expound on that and offer her, her advice on it.
All right. Thanks, Matt. Yeah, you summarized that correctly. So especially for the public that are on the phone, the way that county code works is that except for our Health and Human Services, or Health, sorry, Health Codes, each independent municipality, of which we have is 21 within the county, have the option to opt into any part of the county code that does not currently apply to them or that they don't have a code themselves to apply to. Of the 21 municipalities that we have in the county, 11 of them were already opted into the pesticide code. We've actually had a pesticide code 33B for many years now. It mostly applied in the retail space in terms of dealing with making sure that pesticides were not on the same shelves as edible foods, for example, dealing with spills, things like that. So most municipalities would not have really noticed whether they were opted in or not. When this law passed in 2015, it was held up in the courts until June of 2019. And so that's when it became enacted. It was actually sort of, in some ways, an issue because it was retroactive. It was supposed to have a two-year period between when it was enacted and when it was applicable for a January 1, 2018 start. So in June of 2019, there was no time period for that to move over. At that time, we looked at all the municipalities that were opted in already, found the 10 that were not, including the town of Somerset. And like I said, each, each independent town has the opportunity to opt in. I do like to preface this with the fact that none of the municipalities that are currently opted in are looking to opt out of it. Any that are already in there, staying in there, there's no discussions on that end. But the ones that are not in, many of them are in discussions about whether to opt in or not. From the Department of Environmental Protection Department's position is that we think it would benefit all of the municipalities to opt in simply because having consistency across the board within the county makes a lot of sense for the residents for education. Currently, with our education to residents and property owners throughout the county, we do not differentiate in terms of our education. For instance, if we do a mailing, it goes to everyone in the county because this might apply in a place where they work, in a place where they might rent another property, where their child goes to school, et cetera. What it is, is it is essentially a ban on synthetic products for most pest control in lawns, playgrounds, private childcare facilities, and multi-recreation areas. There are a lot of exemptions to the law of where it does not apply. For instance, it does not apply to golf courses. It does not apply to right-of-ways and utility lines. And it, so there's, there are some exemptions to it. There's exemptions for biting and stinging insects like mosquitoes, ticks, you know, disease vectors. There are exemptions for things like poison ivy, a few invasive species and things like that. People are allowed to use any product that is allowed under USDA organic farming rules. So there's an extensive list of products people can rely on. We mostly focus within our department on educating people on cultural methods. But we also provide the information if people need it for what alternatives they have out there. And it, so far, you know, we're, we're, it's rolled out. It's in effect as of today, according to our legal counsel. It's been in effect for a year. But the way we work with all of our environmental codes within the county is that we try to do our best to educate the public. That's our number one role. We're not out there to try to issue fines. It's not a money-making venture for the department to do things like this. We're there to protect the environment and human health. And that's what this law is all about. I know that you all had some questions that were typed up ahead of time and I'll definitely address this. One thing before I answer those questions is to just address the sort of time of year. We've had some questions from municipalities as they're looking into whether or not to adopt this. And what I've recommended is if you consider adoption, you know, say at this time, say you wanted to have a vote today, tomorrow, whenever about it, is that we are in the growing season. Contractors are out there that might have already contracted with property owners to do work through the season. Is that even if you were to adopt it today, is to look towards having it like effective of a date and pick late fall, early winter so that contractors can finish out any of the work that they're doing this year to get through the season without having their contracts upended in the middle of the season. That would be just something to consider if you do look into this, just so we don't have to deal with people asking questions. DEP has, you know, been careful, was careful with that last year for contractors to make sure that they could get through the season because, again, it was June where it suddenly came into effect. And we realize and recognize that we have a big business community out there that's doing things. To date, we've, we've dealt with several complaints. Most of them have been relatively unfounded. If it's companies that people are complaining about, most of them have been compliant and all have, you know, very professional in terms of getting their programs up and running to provide alternatives within the county. And, you know, we realize that there is a big, you know, adjustment in that. But the professionals all have licenses. They've been getting educated. They know about this law, which is fantastic to have a good community of folks who are being compliant. So I'm just going to go through just to address, and again, people can ask questions afterwards. But I'll just go through some of the questions that Matt sent me, that the council had some questions. The first was what penalties and enforcement mechanisms exist against individual citizens if we adopt the legislation? Right now, for whether it's an individual citizen or a company, everybody's equal under the law. There is a $50 civil penalty that can be enacted. We don't necessarily expect to be putting fines against anybody for a while. You know, if people start blatantly violating the law because they've been notified, we'll look towards that. But right now, what we're doing is sending out letters to anybody that's suspected of a violation, making sure they know about the law, asking them to contact us if they need help or have questions. But again, it's just a $50 civil fine if, if and when we need to go in that direction. Number two is if a person buys a product at a store in Montgomery County, it's determined not to be in compliance with the law, are they liable? What are the penalties and enforcement mechanisms? And there was a similar question about if they bought it from another jurisdiction and brought it in. There is no restriction on the selling of the products. So for example, I'm just going to throw the word roundup out there because a lot of people just use the term roundup, you know, can I spray roundup, et cetera. So these products can still be used in other parts of their property. They are not banned in the county completely. They're banned for use within lawns, playgrounds, multi-recreation areas, private childcare facilities. But for example, those products that might be in roundup or similar things could still be used in sidewalk cracks. They can still be used in garden beds. They can still be used on poison ivy. So, um, so there is no ban on the actual purchase of it or a full ban on the use of specific products. If it's allowed for sale in the state of Maryland, there is no restriction on it. So the only thing that's required is that, under the law, if it's a store within Montgomery County that has these products, they have to have signage up about the law. And that is something that will enforce on the retailers to make sure that there is signage in the places where they sell pesticides to ensure people have access to that information. So there are no penalties or liabilities if somebody uses, buys a product here or in another locale. And then it says, another question is if a person uses a vendor and the vendor uses a product that's not approved, what is the liability of the person? What are the penalties and what are the enforcement mechanisms? This is a great question that we hope to not have to cross that bridge, but we'll definitely deal with our legal counsel if we have to. Right now, if it's a professional applicator, a vendor that's doing this, our first role is to educate and work with them to change their practices and force upon them. It's, you know, typically when somebody is hiring another contractor, they are trusting that they're following laws, no matter what those laws are. So we don't expect to cross that bridge. If we had to, we'll, we'll deal with that as it may. But as I mentioned, we have a lot of environmental laws and there's complexities to them. And we try not to be, you know, we're not out there to be the bad cops, really. We're out there to, again, you know, get people to protect the environment and understand why they should do it. And then how are vendors being advised of what they have to do and how long do they have to comply? So as mentioned, the law is in effect right now. If the town of Somerset were to adopt it, I would still, you know, kind of give my, my advice to wait until their growing season is over and give them a chance to get through any contracts they have. But in terms of advising, many of these professionals have been through pesticide recertifications. They have to go through, through them every year. And between myself and many others out there, I would say it would be surprising if a, a current vendor within the county or working within the county is not familiar with this law. If they're not familiar with it, they'll learn very quickly through fellow vendors, possibly through the residents, because all the residents are learning about this. And again, if, let's say it's a new company and they just had no idea, we're going to work on educating them. And then the last one was, are there any accommodations being given for the hardship of small businesses during the pandemic? And the answer to that is no, there's been no requests and no considerations for any hardship that somebody has brought up to us about any impact of this law during the pandemic. In fact, most of the questions have been from residents asking if, if the county or the state even is considering whether or not to ban the use of all products out there. And we're not working on, we're just following state guidance in terms of any landscaping business during the pandemic. So with that, I, I'm happy to answer questions now, Matt, if you want to do that or if you want to pass it off to Bob and have him speak and then take all the questions at the end. That's up to you.
Thank you very much, Mary. Yes, we're going to have Bob speak and then we're going to, then we're going to have a round of questions from our council.
Perfect. I'll go ahead and mute myself.
For that excellent presentation. Okay, Bob, you're up. Thank you for joining us.
Good afternoon, everybody. I'd like to point out that I'm joined by my boss, Andrew Bray. Give him a little wave, Andrew, show him where you are. So we're going to tag team this. I've got a short PowerPoint presentation. And let's see, the host disabled PowerPoint screen sharing. Matt, can you set me up here?
Yeah, let's see.
It's so much fun learning all these, you know, the brave new frontier, huh?
Sorry about that. Let's see. Um. Advance. Okay, um, I believe you should be good to go now.
I am good to go. And here is my PowerPoint right here. Excellent. Wonderful. And everyone say? Up there, Matt?
I can see it. Yeah.
Excellent. Wonderful. Again, thank you very much for having us here today. Andrew Bray and myself, Bob Mann, I'm the Director of State and Local Government Relation, Relations here at the National Association of Landscape Professionals. And we would like to talk about a few things that are going on in Montgomery County. First is, I, we want to bring up the benefits of healthy landscapes. We want to point out that there's, it's a lot more than just mowing lawns and killing dandelions. We want to point out that there's, it's a lot more than just mowing lawns and killing dandelions and things of that nature. We have a definite public health aspect to the work that we do. Many of our members are responsible for the control of mosquitoes, ticks and insects on landscapes. And, you know, the, in addition to that, we have to point out all the diseases. You know, we're a coronavirus right now, but there are a lot of diseases that exist in the landscape that our, our members are responsible for, for helping control. With, you know, triple E and West Nile virus, you know, we're, we're just a month or two away from having to encounter that. Fleas could not only vector diseases in human beings, but also in our pets. And of course, you know, the tick, Lyme disease with ticks and the tularemia. So we kind of come back to this from the broken window theory that, you know, when we, when we care for our landscapes, we're helping to protect the safety and productivity of our community. You were just talking about the storefronts and keeping businesses going. That's all part of the same thing. We want to make sure that our, our community is well kept and up to date. But there are also a number of environmental benefits that we need to take into consideration. Our, our landscapes are responsible for, for habitat, for pollinators, all kinds of wildlife that, that we, in the landscapes that we provide. The environmental benefits of especially of turf grass are often overlooked. This photograph here that I've got in front of you was one that was taken at Virginia Tech a couple of years ago during the midst of a rainstorm. And it's a very interesting and very telling, I think, that is a slope that is, that has both turf grass and juniper growing on it at the same time. And you can see that, you know, the turf grass is allowing for the infiltration in rainwater as opposed to what's going on in the juniper bed. And if you take this in writ large, you understand that, you know, if we're able to hold soil into place, that allows us to, first of all, to retain the rainwater before it gets into our sewer systems. But we also have to take into consideration that it's stopping erosion from occurring. Now, not only is erosion bad from the point of view of losing topsoil and that type of thing, but the, there are nutrients, as part of that soil matrix, there's nutrients involved in that. And as those nutrients move off site, they simply go into the drain. So this is part of what we're trying to get at with proper, you know, with proper care of the, of the landscape is just isn't, there's a definite environmental aspect of the work that we do. Now, with regard to how our industry is, is regulated, first of all, there is a, the Department of Agriculture in Maryland is lead state agency. And by, by that, I mean that the lead state agency enters into relationships with the Environmental Protection Agency for the proper regulation of pesticides. It's a, it's a compact between them. In fact, that was on a, it was on an EPA webinar earlier, earlier today that goes to, you know, two full days that, you know, that these, these groups get together and talk about pesticide policy. As it relates to the certification process, what the, the applicators go through, the Maryland Department of Agriculture requires, first of all, you need to be 18 years old in order to even apply to be, become a certified applicator. You need to have at least a year's worth of experience, you know, under your belt before you're allowed to apply, or you have to have a college degree in some type of agriculture related major. And then once you're, uh, once you apply, you need to pass a core competency test. In addition to that, you need to take a certification exam in your particular line of work. If it happens to be turf grass, shade trees, ornamentals, interior landscaping, that type of thing. So there's all kinds of different, you know, specializations that these licenses cover. And of course, there's a 70% minimum passing score. Once you've got the license, you need to keep up with your training. Annual recertification in, in Maryland is required. In other words, each, each applicant, each certified applicator has to sit through at least eight hours of annual training. And for turf grasses, this is even more stringent than it is for, is for other, other license holders. And you must cover all, new technologies, developments, and IPM practices have to be part of that curriculum. Other requirements that applicators in Maryland have to abide by, there's a sign posting requirement. Anytime you apply a pesticide to a lawn, you must, you must at least post at the interest of the property. And then there are subsequent requirements where if you're doing a spot treatment, you have to post that. But you want to be at least logical about where you put the signage on the property. It has to remain there for at least 48 hours. Pesticide sensitive notification program is administered by the Department of Agriculture. If you happen to have a medically, uh, I guess I'm, I'm stuck on a word here. If your doctor tells you you have a sensitivity, you can be told that an application is going to be done. There are school IPM programs that need to be abided by, you know, the application of pesticides to, to school grounds. In addition to that, there's an incredible amount of record keeping that needs to be adhered to. Each application, each product that's applied, how much is applied, where it's applied, the products that were used, it's a rather, rather onerous amount of regulation in that regard. And additionally, you know, these products that we're talking about today are already evaluated and registered by the EPA. And then on top of that, they have been looked at by the Maryland Department of Agriculture and registered for use within the state. The FIFR process is long and involved. It usually takes at least 10 years to get a product from the laboratory through the absolutely amazingly complex process of registration at the EPA. The amount of human health and ecological risk assessment that go along with these products before they come on market is, is, is incredibly elaborate and costing hundreds of millions of dollars for the registrants to get them there. Once they've been on the market, they're on a 15 year re-registration cycle. And so they, they have to be completely gone through again on a regular basis. So once these products come to market, there's an enormous amount of science that goes behind, that backs them up as far as safety and advocacy. Andrew, you want to take it from here?
Sure, sure. And Mayor Slavin, council members, thank you so much for taking the time in this new norm to do this webinar with us. Well, we would love to see you. I apologize, my hair is about two months overdue from a much needed trim. But, but thank you. The implementation, I think Mary did a tremendous job covering kind of the nuts and bolts of what happened. So rather than go in this in detail, Bob, you can go ahead and just click through them all. Just kind of wanted to give a few highlights. And Matt, you also covered some of this. You know, obviously, so one of the key takeaways is that this, when this ordinance passed, we're going to have about a two-year time period to implement. Obviously, because of the retroactivity of the court case and the litigation, all of a sudden, this happened last summer and it's being implemented almost immediately. I think Mary and her team have done a great job, though, of trying to get this information out and handling enforcement even handily. But where our biggest concern is, and Mary's heard me talk about this, is that Mary mentioned the reason that you all should opt in is for consistency. Well, just so you guys know, that was kind of the key argument of the entire court case. Maryland is one of six states in the nation that doesn't have pesticide preemption at the state level. Okay? And so when, when Mary says it's a consistency issue, well, it's a consistency issue at the county level because there's very few operators in Maryland that operate in just Montgomery County. You know, they'll be operating in several counties in the state. So from a consistency standpoint, really what should be happening is that counties and townships should be taking the lead from the experts that actually register the pesticides, which in the state of Maryland is the Department of Agricultural, which there is no statewide ban on pesticides that are approved by the State Department of Agricultural and further approved by the U.S. Environmental Protection Agency. I just need to point that out. That's where I think Mary and the folks that wrote the law, we have a fundamental disagreement because, you know, from our perspective, we want to rely on the experts that have done the extensive tests and research and rely on certified applicators to be conducting these products safely. Whereas I believe Montgomery County put forth an ordinance that wasn't completely based in fact and more just speculation and I think some motivations that are anti pesticide related. And we're here to work with them on that. That's, that's what our goal is here. I, I think our biggest concern is when you look at the timing right now, we already had an issue with a two-year, I mean, with this going, with this being implemented immediately. And when you think about what is happening right now, you know, Mary and I were with each other in January, I believe that was in Gaithersburg. We've been, I've been to Kensington, I've been to Chevy Chase, I've been to Rockville. To date, Kensington is not opting in. I don't believe Gaithersburg or Chevy Chase have made a decision yet. We'll be following up with them. And I'll be honest with you, we're planning to follow up with, with the entire county on this entire issue. The only reason we haven't is obviously for all of the reasons that you all have been very busy. As we've been handling COVID-19 related issues and the fact that, you know, the, the federal government has determined the landscape industry as an essential industry that is helping protect the safety and sanitation of businesses and residences. So that's what we've been busy doing, but we're glad to be able to sit here and talk with you about how we think there are some smart solutions to fix some of these problems and make sure we're finding things that kind of serve all of your constituents, all of your residences, all of your small businesses, and still accomplish some goals on some pesticide reduction. So I'll pass it back to you, Bob.
Okeydoke. Very good. Now, I just wanted to point out there are a lot of exemptions to the county ordinances. And Mary, you know, briefly went over this earlier in the, in her remarks. But, you know, we're, we're talking about a body of, a body of products, you know, body of pesticides that are available both in the agricultural and horticultural market. And there's a lot of crossover between them as far as active ingredients concerned. There's differences in labeling, of course, you know, that you can only use a particular pesticide on a particular crop or particular purpose. And a lot of times there's a label for agricultural use, a label for horticultural use. But agriculture was, was, was exempted as well as right of way. The county, the county officials, according to, as is normally the case with governments, you know, they, they opt themselves out of the regulations they impose upon others. Golf courses, a structural pest control, both indoor and outdoor. All of these exemptions use similar products with similar environmental fates. And yet the, the regulations are governed by the same state and federal laws as, as the, as the lawn care products are. So why is it that, you know, it's okay to use them over here, but it's not okay to use them over here? You know, when they've been, when, when they've been evaluated for human health and environmental fate by the EPA, by the Maryland State Department of Agriculture, all of a sudden, we have another set of rules on top of that? So why have we been singled out? And this is not something that's, that's, you know, unique to Montgomery County. This is something that, you know, it just seems as though there is a stigma about putting pesticides on lawns that people have, some have latched on to and tried to make into public policy. Andrew, you want to take it from here?
Yeah, and so, you know, I'll go through this quickly. I want to make sure we have enough time for you guys to answer questions. And I kind of covered this previously, but, you know, what we had been doing is, is we've been going out and meeting with, with townships. You know, we've been meeting with the county. I know that, that Mary has been very kind at meeting with us several times. She's also, when she's put together flyers to go out to educate the public, she's offered us an opportunity to weigh in and we appreciate that. Look, I want to be very frank with everybody, you know, here. Whatever decision is made, you know, we're committed to abiding by all, you know, local ordinances, laws and regulations. We just think that there's some smart tweaks we could do here. And that's what we're going to continue to do. I know that Mary was mentioning, you know, you could pass something tomorrow and then, you know, wait and do it and make it, you know, effective January 1. I think considering that the tumultuous period we're in right now and potential impacts to small business, I would, I would caution that rather than passing something today and implementing, you know, six months from now, why don't you consider it again in six months and kind of see the world we're in? I also say that because like I said, we're, we're going to take another run at some possible solutions with the Montgomery County. And Bob, you go to the next slide, we can kind of go over a little bit of that as well. You know, because one of our biggest concerns, and Mary mentioned this, is there are these exemptions of what you can or can't use the product for. Okay? So how is a homeowner going to be able to tell if a certified applicator is using product X, which is completely permissible to treat a tick, but is not permissible to treat a white grub? Okay? I am not an agronomist and I do, do this work regularly to represent the industry nationally, and I probably wouldn't be able to tell the difference. So I think you're looking for situations where you've got probably some citizens that probably have an anti pesticide agenda that are going to lead to further problems. Another issue is that I think the, the people that are going to be the most hurt are the folks that are the certified applicators, the ones that are doing everything responsibly, the ones that have big recognizable names on their trucks. Whereas the folks that are doing things irresponsibly are going to continue to do these things irresponsibly. So what we really think is that there needs to be more concerted effort on, on this education and how pesticides, if we work with the county, and, and we don't have the answer yet, but what I would like to figure out is what is, if there is a goal of pesticide reduction, well, then let's work together on it. But taking away critical tools right now from the, the landscape industry, we just don't think is a wise approach because it's not really rooted or based in science. We also know that there are several people that claim that organic products work. Well, a lot of it is they don't work. We've seen people totally taken advantage of being used by these products. They're called 25Bs because they are less, less by EPA. They also cost extensively more. So you're looking at a time right now where we're definitely in some economic uncertainty and we just don't think it is wise at this point to do something that would critically hurt small landscape businesses is not based in science. It would actually impact those that might want pesticides treated and wouldn't be able to or would have to use some sort of alternative that is maybe more expensive. While there's all these exemptions, and I think Bob may have mentioned it, but you all can continue to use these products on public property. I'm not sure where your budget constraints are, aren't going to be, but, but I think there'll be certain times that you may want the ability to use a pesticide. Well, if you have that ability, I think you should also give your citizens that ability. And that's what we're trying to work through. I apologize, we don't have all of the answers right now. Is our goal is to go back to the county and see if we can rework some of these things. But we would strongly encourage you to, to, to hold off on opting in. Let's continue to work on this. Let's continue to, to look at the economic uncertainties that are surrounding us and make a smart decision sometime in the coming months. So thank you for your time. I know Bob and I will make ourselves available for questions. And it's very good seeing you. I'm sorry we're not sitting next to each other again today.
Okay, good. I want to, I want to thank the three of you for that, those outstanding presentations. And of course, as we might have suspected, it's way more complicated than we could have ever imagined. And I note that we, we've only allotted until 3 o'clock for this. And so what I would like to do is start by going through our council for questions. And then we will stop at 3:00. And could I get a commitment from the three of you that we can reconvene maybe next week? And we can then finish the questions from our council? And then we can have our residents and guests also ask questions? So with that, is that okay? Because we're not
That's fine.
not under the gun. This is just a hearing. And so thank you very much. So that, let's start with Council President Shaw. Would you like to ask some questions?
I'll just ask one. On the first slide, Bob, that you had where you talked about protection of health on fleas and ticks and mosquitoes, is that permitted currently under the, the new county law or not?
Yeah, yes, it is. So ticks, fleas, biting insects and disease vectors are exempt.
Okay, thank you.
Is that, thank you.
I would, I would just add on that note, though, part of, you know, creating an environment that basically, you know, inhibits ticks and singing insects are unkept lawns. So obviously, there's cultural practice such as proper mowing or whatnot, but healthy lawns actually serve as a deterrent. And some of the products that we may use to do that would not be permitted.
Okay, thank you. Marty, was that your last question?
In the interest of time, that's my only question.
Okay, well, you'll have another chance in the future. Thank you. Council member, Zoe Hauser.
In the, you know, I really am not a fan of rushing through these discussions and...
Well, you have all the, you have no limit on time now.
Well, I feel everything was kind of pressed for, for time. But in any case, I thought one of the things that was mentioned, and if someone could just clarify this, this, I felt like we ran through, ran through it very quickly. I thought I heard someone say that it was already implemented by most landscapers. Is that correct?
So it's, the law is implemented through all the non incorporated parts of the county as well as 11 of the 21 independent municipalities. Professional landscapers that, that carry pesticide licenses have been compliant with the law, many of them starting in 2019 if they were not already. But this year is when, you know, we really expected compliance from them and have not had a problem to date.
Do you have any sort of information on the landscapers that are, have been compliant? Is that, are you able to share that information?
Yes and no, depending on, on who's asking or what's being asked. But for example, we keep a, we have something called CaseBase, which is where all of our environmental case enforcement goes. So let's say, you know, Bob's Green Landscape Company is, you know, they call in and someone has a concern. If I've spoken, you know, if I speak to, you know, Bob at Bob Green's Landscaping Company, it will be in that case database that we've had communications with them and that they're assuring us that they've been compliant.
And in terms of policing, is this something that our staff, the town of Somerset, would be involved in or not?
No. No, the county, if you adopt any county codes, the county is there to do all of the education and enforcement. There's no additional burden to the municipality.
So that if someone were to call the town hall office and say, "The landscaper's there, and I have the feeling that they're doing, using something that isn't appropriate," what would the response... What should our town hall say, and what would the response of the county be?
So the best thing we would recommend is people call that into 311 so that we can track the case and respond to that individual or that company directly. And then, that, like I said, would go into our case base. And if, you know, if the town, for example, really said, "Hey, I also had a complaint from this resident," what was the outcome of that? We could speak with the, you know, council about what the outcome was of that interaction. I just want to address, there was a chat question that came up about herbicides. So, as we were talking throughout this, and even as Bob was mentioning, pesticide is a broad term. It's all the regulations, even at the state and federal level, are under pesticide regulations. So a pesticide includes an herbicide, a fungicide, a rodenticide, an insecticide, et cetera. We do try to... We've tried to start using the word herbicide along with the word pesticide for people who get confused when they say, "Well, you said I can't use a pesticide, but this is an herbicide." You know, it takes a little while for people to get used to the fact that an herbicide is a type of pesticide, but herbicides are included under pesticides along with all the other sides.
My last question is, how did the golf courses end up not being involved?
Councilmembers, I think Bob wanted to answer your other question.
Yeah, this was Andrew. I was just saying, with regards to the enforcement and how they're operating, you know, to date, I think the largest municipalities within the county have yet to opt in. So I think any data really is anecdotal at this point. And with regards to the enforcement, you know, like I said, it's going to be more punitive on the certified applicators where identifiable. But I think where you're running into real trouble is, anybody on this call right now could walk into Home Depot, which is open right now in Montgomery County, and you could buy the product, and you'd go home, and you could use it. But when you use it, you would be in violation. We're concerned that that's going to happen. That's going to be almost impossible to enforce. And when you do enforce it, you're likely going to have disputes between neighbors. And I can't speak for Mary, but I don't know how involved the county's going to get into a neighborly dispute versus a pesticide.
I think it's also important to point out that we're in the compliance business, that, you know, we have almost 50 years of pesticide regulation that our industry has grown up with, that has interacted with, and that's what we do. No matter what jurisdiction we're working in, we're complying with the rules and regulations of that jurisdiction. And Montgomery County will be no different. And what that means is that, you know, we have to sell our services to our customers. And if our services are not effective, those services will be canceled. The problem is that, you know, especially in the lawn care business, you either control weeds or you don't control weeds. And that's where customers tend to cancel, is that's the number-one reason that they do. We're not able to do that any longer. The products that are available to us under the 25B, the EPA 25B program, simply are not effective on weeds. And, you know, you can think what you want about weeds. I happen to have a lot of weeds on my lawn, believe it or not. But, you know, the fact of the matter is, if you... We can't treat lawns we don't have customers for, right? So when you... The upshot of this is that you're forcing the professional applicator out of the marketplace because he can't perform the services that are being requested. So that's where the whole thing with the homeowners comes in, is that, well, I still don't want weeds, so I'll go to Home Depot, and then I do, you know, all kinds of things. Sometimes they're correct, sometimes they're not. So, yeah, I think that's the upshot of it, is that, you know, this type of ordinance simply drives the professional applicator out of the marketplace.
Great, thank you so much.
Councilmember Zoe Gasser, didn't you have another question? Barbara, didn't you have another question?
I'll pass because we are so short on time.
But you'll have it...
That's fine. That's fresh in everybody's mind, but thank you so much.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Peel.
Be brief, and maybe I can just ask some of them now, but push them off for discussion until next week. So I just would like to sort of put a pin in the question about enforcement that Barbara raised, because my understanding from talking to Ron Bull is that if we opt in to this county legislation, that we do actually have a responsibility to enforce it, and that we might, if there were a situation where a resident, you know, was determined on looking for enforcement, and if the county chose not to enforce it, they might look to us. So I think we just need to get a little bit more information from our town attorney about the effect on the town of Somerset, given that we have a small town government and we'd be living at bandwidth for actual enforcement at the local level. Secondly, I would like to, at some point, be able to understand this in context of our municipal budget, so that if we, at the town level, if we were using pesticides to manage the town properties, but we shifted to using the approved materials under the law, what would that... What would the effect be on the town budget? And the one that I wanted to talk about today, and maybe get the advice of the professionals on the calls, what is the typical economic impact of this on homeowners? Because I am confused, and I don't understand who's bearing the cost of the change, whether it's the small business landscapers, whether it's the... Or whether it's the residents, whether those costs are passed through to the people who are paying the landscaping bills or not. And I still... So I don't understand who's being impacted at the end of the day. I guess I'd like an answer on that.
Franny, do you want me to first address just your quick pin about enforcement?
Actually, you know, we don't have our town attorney on the call today, so I think it'd be more helpful for all of us if we could hear that answer at a time when he could be part of it and also understand what you have to say.
Okay, great. And I would say if you're asking him the question in between now and when you discuss with him live, is to just have him compare it to all the other county codes that Somerset has already opted into, and whether or not you've seen a burden from those.
Right, okay.
So, Councilmember, I'll try to answer your question in twofold, and then I'll let Bob add if he has. The way that I think it impacts, it could impact both. It is a trickle-down, but think about right now, you're used to paying... I'm just going to pull a number out. This might not be the right number. You know, you're used to paying something like $100 a month to use synthetic pesticides, and all of a sudden, that number goes to 150. Well, of course, that's going to impact, you know, the end user, the resident. And maybe it's 150, maybe it's 200. I'm just using an example, so please don't hold me to the numbers. But really, the reality that we're concerned with, right now, we think that there's a strong possibility, if all of a sudden, you're having a tightened budget, what are you going to cut? You're going to cut things. You're certainly not going to want to increase costs.
Right.
So that's our concern. And we had that concern even before any of this stuff happened, you know, obviously related to the COVID-19 pandemic. So that's where I'm concerned, is with regards to, you know, your municipality budget, it is certainly more expensive to use non-toothed pesticides. And I don't know if Bob has anything there.
No, I think that, you know, what needs to be pointed out is that anyone who's using pesticides has to start with using best management practices, you know, knowing how the plants that you're growing grow and how to optimize that type of growth before you ever consider using a pesticide. And then, on top of that, within that, actually, the Integrated Pest Management Program, you know, understanding what it is exactly, what the pest is, what its life cycle is, what you can do from a non-pesticide standpoint to, you know, to limit the use of pesticides. And only when you've gone through all of that, then, you know, then that becomes the decision to make those, you know, the decision to use a pesticide. So there's a lot that goes into it before you ever get out the spray can. So it's a lot more difficult and a lot more intricate than it seems on the surface. I'll bring it to that.
No further questions from me.
Okay, thank you. So, Councilmember Panner, please start your questions, but we'll suspend at 3 o'clock. And so, but let's get started.
Thank you. Thanks, everyone, for doing this. And thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council President, for presenting this, because I agree with you, Council President or Mayor, how complex it is. I can submit these in writing, but the questions I have, I'm now very confused about what would be a permissible use. So if I use pesticides to kill mosquitoes on my lawn, that's permitted or not? So I'll submit all these questions in writing. And then, the second question I have is...
Why don't you just ask, when we reconvene, why don't you ask them so that everybody can hear the answers?
So you don't... That's fine. But so I'll hold my questions. I may submit them in writing so you guys have some time to react to them, because I think they're hard and technical questions, but I will... But thank you.
Okay, Councilmember Circa, last word.
Well, we're near the end. I'd also have some technical questions I'd like to ask. I'll put them in writing. I'm curious about the efficacy of the previous treatments before this law went into effect in the county, the efficacy of the organic treatments that are allowed with this, and I'd like to understand a little bit more about the science behind the law. I trust that our county government did not enact this law frivolously, so I assume that there is some good information they can provide to sort of document the health benefits, the environmental benefits of it.
Even, and I'll just encourage, I'll send this around to Matt to share with everyone. I'll share the full script of the law so that people can see that and read that, including the introduction and the findings of the council.
That's excellent. So what we'll do now is, so if all of the speakers could provide whatever written information they have to supplement their presentations, we will get that out. We can put it on our website, what have you. And the two councilmembers that had questions, if they could submit those, then we'll start with Councilmember Panner's questions when we reconvene, and then we will allow our residents and guests to ask questions. And I... So I want to thank everyone for this very informative...
Jeffrey, can I interrupt for a second? Can we invite our attorney to the next conversation, please?
Yeah, we can.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, everyone. Have a great day, and we'll see you all soon. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good night.